Welcome all those who are with us this evening and all those who are watching us and listening to us on TV. I think you've taken an interest in your government. At this time, I'm going to have a roll call for the record. Mayor Protim, are you here?
President.
Councilmember Ravenbark, are you here?
Present.
Councilmember Grady, are you here?
Present.
Councilmember Anderson, are you here?
Present.
Councilmember Barnett, are you here?
Present.
Councilmember Spears, are you here?
Present.
And the chair is present. This time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Clifford Barnett to do our invocation and ask that everyone remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Legions. Councilmember Barnett?
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you again for another opportunity to serve the citizens of Wilmington, North Carolina. We thank you, God, because even this week is a little different than the last couple of weeks we met with all this going on in our country. But yet, what I keep hearing you say is that you are so aware of what's going on and you've got this. So, God, we thank you and we ask that you will give us the strength and the wisdom that we need to make our world a better place to live. Be in this meeting tonight. May the things that we do and say make you smile. With in his name I pray. Amen.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States and to the Republic which is one nation under God, in the end of it all, delivered in justice for all. We have three presentations this evening, and the first presentation is a presentation on the North Carolina Biotech Center update by Randall Johnson. And I'd like to recognize Eris Dunston.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we have Mr. Johnson here to present an update on the North Carolina Biotech Center. This is an update that we've been waiting on for a while, but due to COVID, it was delayed. So, we're very happy to have him here with us connecting remotely. Mr. Johnson is the Executive Director of the NC Biotech Center. He is a member of the Wilmington Rotary Board and also serves as the President of the North Carolina Economic Development Association. I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Eris, and thanks for having me tonight, Mayor Saffo and Mayor Protim Haynes and City Council members. I'm pleased to be with you to share a little bit of an update on what we're working on in southeastern North Carolina to grow biotech in the region. Let me start by, if we can get the slideshow going here, let me start by taking a step back and looking at some of the activity across North Carolina. As most of you know, North Carolina has a very strong biotech sector. It's an $86 billion industry, 775-plus companies employing hundreds of thousands of people in the state with state and local revenues seeing an impact from this industry as well. So, we're fortunate to have this industry across the state, and it truly is across the state. I have regional offices, counterparts like my office here that are focused on a range of sectors across the state. We have a huge vaccine cluster here. Clinical research is big across the state as well as bio-manufacturing. But if you look across our other offices, you see regenerative medicine and nanobiotechnology and a range of other sectors. Here in this region, as you probably know, marine biotech is big for us and industrial biotech is big and clinical research, and those are the sectors that I'll talk about tonight. First, I wanted to mention industrial biotech. It may be a sector you're not familiar with, and basically, I think of industrial biotech as converting waste products or byproducts into useful products. And for us in southeastern North Carolina, industrial biotech really means waste streams like animal manure, food production, food processing waste, industrial waste of different kinds, municipal waste, converting that to bioenergy. So, the opportunity there is very big for us throughout this region and really across the state. When you look at the opportunity compared to other states, the National Renewable Energy Lab says that North Carolina has about the third-largest or richest bio resource in the U.S. for biogas production. So, we're working to tap into that. One of the things I've done is to create a GIS map that looks at all our bio-renewable resources across the region. This is a map that includes 16 different layers. It looks like a lot of activity there. When you start to drill down on individual layers, though, you see the opportunities that we're looking for, clustering of assets that we can use to go out and attract companies here and help entrepreneurial companies grow. So, in food processing, this is one example of an area we're looking at. We've already seen one major company start with this type of biogas production, bioenergy production. Optima TH out of Tarheel creates biogas that's injected directly into the natural gas pipeline infrastructure in the state. That's only the second project of its kind in the state, and it's right here in the southeastern region. The first was a hog waste to bioenergy application, and that was in duplicality, so in our region as well. This is all part of the governor's Clean Energy Plan, and it really does hold a lot of promise for our region and for the state as we move forward. I think most of us are also aware of the marine biotech potential here in the region. You're aware of UNCW and the pharmaceutical activity around marine biotech, as well as potentially the oyster and finfish activity, growing fish for human consumption, as well as some bioenergy types of activities related to algae. So, we've invested time and resources of all kinds, vast amounts of money into creating this infrastructure, these morbiotic buildings, Center for Marine Science, oyster hatchery as a way to capitalize on that opportunity that very few areas in the world actually have. We are a global player in Wilmington on the marine biotech stage. You see clusters around the world, and we're right in the middle of the East Coast cluster that has so much opportunity in pharma and fuel and fish farming and oyster farming, and the list goes on. We've held a number of events here, international events. This event was held several years ago where we attracted folks from 17 countries and about 20 states. That's investors and entrepreneurs and government leaders to focus on commercialization in this sector. And we've continued to hold similar events at a more local and regional scale since then with the UNCW Global Marine Science Summit, the FISH 2.0 Regional Workshops that UNC CIE has hosted, that's the Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship at UNCW, as well as other activities and blue economy-focused activity in the region. The sector that I imagine most of us are most familiar with is the clinical research sector, mostly because we see the very large presence of PPD here in the region and in our city, including the large building on the waterfront. But I hope you also know that there are many other companies represented here in the clinical research space in addition to that great asset in PPD that we have. These are just a few of the logos of companies that have a presence here in our region and especially in our micro region around Wilmington. In fact, we have over 60 CROs represented here in the region, and many times, that's a person who works for a company that's headquartered elsewhere, but they can live anywhere in the world. They choose to live in Wilmington, and they can access the world to do their work through our airport. So, we've got quite a few of those folks who live here and who represent companies here in our region. So, that's the 60-plus, and then we have another 65 or so additional medical device and testing and development companies. So, the employment here is close to 4,500 for this cluster. We also have a number of clinical trials ongoing at any one time in the region, and of course, we have that strong foundation of UNCW's clinical research programs, both the BS and the MS. As part of the effort to grow this sector, I put together many years ago the NC Coast Clinical Research Initiative. It's an economic development initiative focused on strengthening that cluster. So, we've held networking events over time. We hold educational events, events to pull together industry leaders to find out what they need to be successful here and then to act on those recommendations from industry leaders. One of the things that came out of that type of focus group that we've implemented in the past few years is the FUCR Clinical Research Workforce Center. This is a partnership of UNCW, Biotech Center, industry partners, and with a foundational grant from Duke Energy of close to $400,000. The vision for that effort, for the FUCR effort, is to have the best-trained, most highly-skilled, effective, and well-connected community of professionals in clinical research field anywhere in the world, and that's what we have here in Wilmington. This is an economic development effort as well. We want to see this workforce and talent development effort end up with more companies, more talent coming to the area, a greater number of jobs hired at existing companies, and so on. And we have seen that with raising our competitiveness through this program, with having opportunities for clinical research, professional development for existing employees throughout their career. It helps retain that talent here in our area. We were also gratified to be honored by the Association of Clinical Research Professionals recently for FUCR with their Workforce Innovation Award as a finalist for that award. So, we continue to see the benefits of that work over time. Now, let me jump to an initiative that I launched last year, the NC Pioneer Venture Challenge. This was a fun activity. We had a great time with it despite running into COVID. I'll talk about that in a minute. This is a life science-based, innovation-focused venture challenge for the region, and it's for biotech pioneers in southeastern North Carolina, bringing life sciences innovations to the marketplace. So, to make this happen, we really were focused on greater commercialization of life sciences in the region, which would eventually, will eventually lead to greater job creation and investment in life sciences in the region. So, to do that, we set up a program with intense mentoring for the venture finalists for the four ventures that were sent to the finals for this competition, intense networking, and we were able to do that despite COVID and mostly through Zoom. But that was an interesting experience to transition. We also had connections with our North Carolina Biotech Center Life Science Intelligence Team that helped the companies with market research and industry research. We had entrepreneurial pitch coaching. UNCW Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship offered a one-year tenancy for the winner of this challenge. There's promotion that we continue to do for the challenge and for the winners and participants in that challenge. And probably most importantly for a lot of people, at least when they're thinking about the challenge, was the $40,000 in awards to the Venture Challenge finalists. That's pretty significant for our region, especially the top award of $20,000 to the award winner. We were glad to see applications come from across the region for this Venture Challenge. We received 13 from across the region, and they represented a broad range of sectors in our region, including marine biotech, industrial, biofuels, and so on. So, the breadth and diversity of those sectors was great to see. We held our mentoring sessions and networking and pitch coaching, as I mentioned, by Zoom. We were concerned that that might not be as productive as we'd like, but we did see some great successes from that, and we ended up learning a lot and seeing benefits to the companies that were involved beyond what we expected. All of that culminated in a pitch judging session in May where we awarded the four top venture finalists those prize awards that I mentioned earlier. My leadership team was Diane Durant from UNCW Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship, and you may remember Deb Moska from the Marine Biotech Center of Innovation. She was the CEO there. They were a fantastic team. We also had mentors representing a range of industries, about 20 of those mentors, professionals from the area, who served on mentor teams for each of those venture finalists to help them along in that process of learning and developing the company for two months. We had a number of reviewers who looked at the applications and decided who should move to the venture finalist stage. You see, these represent medical center, leaders of companies and boards of companies, investors, and UNCW. And likewise, for the pitch judges, we saw, we had folks from across the state involved, and they also represented NC IDA, investors, and CEOs of companies to help us pick those final winners, who were the Isosceles Pharmaceuticals, AccuGenomics, Electronic Lab Logs, and Endiomics. And of course, because of the restrictions in May, we were forced to present these awards not at a public, large public event as we planned, but in person in a socially-distanced and safe way. And so, that all worked out better than expected. These were our lead partners, UNCW, and especially the Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship, who were strong financial supporters as well, and New Hanover Regional Medical Center, the Business Journal, and NC IDA. So, that's a quick snapshot of some of the activity in the region related to biotech and how we grow biotech innovation here. I'm happy to answer any questions now or in the future, and I appreciate you giving me a little bit of time today to update you on all the important activity we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This time, I do, next presentation will be a World War II Heritage City designation update, and this time, I'd like to recognize Tony McKeown, who's the Special Assistant to the City Manager for Legislative Affairs, and Captain Wilbur Jones.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, city manager and council. First slide, please. I cancel it. Okay. As you see up in front of you is the new official emblem from the U.S. Department of Interior, National Park Service for the brand-new program, World War II American Heritage City. And as I put on there, very simply, Wilmington did it. Thanks to Captain Wilbur Jones and our great history and the city's contribution to that history and the preservation of that history, we are the first, the inaugural heritage city, World War II heritage city in our country, and it's a major accomplishment. As you know, President Trump came to town September 2nd, 2020, and identified us, officially designated us the first World War II Heritage City. I want to specifically thank Congressman David Rousers, well Senator Tillis and their staff for the hard work. Without those two offices in particular, we would have not gotten this much-deserved recognition. Next slide, please. What I want to just give you a brief background on it, what it means, and where we go from here with it, how we're going to honor this honor. So, just in a nutshell, what this program is, and I know you are familiar with it, but just to remind everyone is this pays honor to a community that not only paid a unique contribution to our World War II effort on the home front, but also what we have done as a community to preserve that World War II heritage, that unique heritage that we have. And obviously, a lot of that preservation not only came from dedicated private citizens like Captain Wilbur Jones, but as well city and county government and their investments in sites like the Hannah Block USO and what we've done to preserve that. So, again, it's not just the contributions that were made during wartime, but it's what have we done since as a community to preserve that heritage. Captain Wilbur Jones, who's going to speak briefly to you in just a moment, has been working on this for over 12 years. I know that when I, in my previous career, worked for a member of Congress, I worked with him on the issue, and there were many kind of stops and starts and stops and starts, and Congressman Mike McIntyre at the time, Senator Burr aided this effort greatly, but we were never ultimately able to get it across the finish line. A few years ago, I think the city stepped up in a more active way. Several trips to Washington, D.C. that I know the mayor helped with and council members helped with to advocate on the city's behalf and on behalf of the effort that Captain Wilbur Jones was leading. And in 2018, we took a next step with the help of Representative Ted Davis, our state legislator, to get the state legislator to pass a resolution calling on Congress to designate Wilmington as the first World War II Heritage City. Next slide, please. So, now that we have gotten this recognition after these many years of effort, what do we do with it now? Well, the first thing that we did is we established a working group to help market and promote our new designation, help create educational opportunities as well. So, we had staff from the City Managers Department, communication staff, Jared's staff have been excellent to work with on this and putting together a lot of good efforts. Captain Wilbur Jones, Convention and Visitors Bureau staff, which I'll touch on that in a moment, Chamber of Commerce staff, Hannah Block USO staff, and staff from the battleship have all been at the table to help kind of see where we go from here and put some plans in place. Next slide, please. So, on the first, marketing tourism. I'd like to just draw your attention, if you wouldn't mind bringing up that particular page. So, here's what the CVB has done thus far. And so, in addition to this page that they're going to bring up and scroll through for you, they're actively working with press outlets, different veterans-based organizations, periodicals, different media outlets, to try and bring visitors to our community around this new designation. And so, hopefully, ultimately, this is going to have a very real impact on our local economy even. So, that shows you some of what the CVB has done. I know Captain Wilbur Jones has worked diligently to provide them with some excellent content. In the next page, I'll show you, so if you, there's one picture you're just missing, but there's some signage at the USO, the Hannah Block USO has already started to put up that recognizes this new designation as well. The next page is with, which is pretty impressive, is the National Park Service. Already has something up related to this new Heritage City program in Wilmington being the first ever. So, it draws people to our local page. It draws people to some of our, the press, local press coverage of it. And so, as you see, the first link that's on there is Wilmington, North Carolina Designated as American World War II Heritage City. So, obviously, this is available worldwide. This is the National Park Service website, so that's impressive as well. Next slide, please. So, before you today on your agenda, on the consent agenda, is consideration for some new welcome signage that would accompany the "Welcome to Wilmington" sign. And in order to work with the direction we've been given from DOT as far as, you know, the number of characters that can be on a sign, how big it can be and everything, we've settled on this, America's first World War II Heritage City. So, the resolution that's before you on your consent agenda, once you, if you do pass that, we will then turn that over to Department of Transportation, and they will begin production of the signs, and those ultimately will go on 10 of the entry points into the city of Wilmington. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Traffic Engineering wanted me to let council know that the current welcome signs are actually at the end of their service life, and Traffic Engineering, in conjunction with Communications, is working on the possibility of incorporating the city logo into the replacement welcome signs, and that this will be brought to a future council meeting. Next slide, please. So, the next steps, again, city communication staff is, they're updating a trifold brochure that includes an excellent guide map. I think it's over 20 different sites in the community that relate to our World War II Heritage designation. And so, that would be available at hotels, available at the Chamber of Commerce, different restaurants in the community to where folks can pick those up, and whether they're residents or visitors can follow this guide map, can learn about the different sites as they do so. And then playing off of that, I think probably the most ambitious goal that our working group has thought of is possible formulation of a World War II heritage trail with associated signage. Some of the ideas tossed around would be whether or not there could be a partnership with a private sector sponsor that could help pay for some signage that would be at, let's say, 10 of the most poignant locations in the community along this trail. But again, there's a lot more than 10 in the community, but, you know, if you focus on 10 sites where folks could visit and see for themselves the contributions that were made at the time, as well as the preservation efforts that have come since. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Captain Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tony, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. What a coincidence. It was 13 years ago that I appeared before this council for another resolution that started this whole thing. And that time, Sterling was good enough to put me on the agenda with sort of a wild idea, but why not make Wilmington America's World War II city? Bill Saffo was just a young man at the time, and he was a rookie on city council, and none of the rest of you had even thought about entering politics. George Bush was president, and I, I never thought it was going to take this long, but look what we have. I'm so proud of Wilmington. I'm so proud of what we have accomplished as a team, and particularly, want to thank Tony McKeown for not only his exceptionally professional help over the last couple of years in bringing this thing to this point, but also in putting together this working group and carrying these ideas along. I think this idea of the sign is great. I know the mayor and I have talked about it over the years every time we see each other. Wouldn't it look good on Wilmington's entry signs? It's been my dream, my aspiration, and I certainly believe that we deserve it and would ask the city council to support this resolution and allow us to continue to work on it. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I'm proud to be a Wilmington native. I'm proud of my hometown in New Hanover County, and I'm proud to have been part of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Jones. And I just want to say, on behalf of the city council, I just want to say thank you for your leadership and tenacity and perseverance in making this a reality. I know that it took a lot of work, and I don't, I just want people to understand that it is very, very, very difficult to get anything passed in the United States Congress. It took us 13 years to get here, but we did it, and it was overwhelming support. And I also want to thank Senator Burr, Senator Tillis, Congressman Rouser, Congressman McIntyre. There was a tremendous effort in getting this done in a bipartisan way, and I really appreciate all of your efforts, Wilbur, and your friendship, because you also are a historian that has preserved the history of Wilmington during that time and has been able to share that history and how rich that history is. And as generations come behind us or come forward, they'll be appreciative of the efforts that you and others have done in preserving that history for future generations. But it was a very special day to get this recognition, to be the first in the country. I know that there were other cities that wanted to be the first, but Wilbur fought very hard and testified before Congress that we should be the first because we asked for it to be the first, and we should be the first. But it was a great day, and thank you for all your efforts in the preservation of our history. I know you were also very vocal and very supportive of the preservation of the USO building many years ago, and we thank you for that, and just thank you for your public service, not only to this community, but to this country, because you served us in the United States Navy, and I know you served on President Ford's staff at some time, and I just want to say again, thank you on behalf of all the citizens of Wilmington. Thank you. Thank you. Our next presentation is the mayor's Ad-Hoc Clean Energy Policy Task Force Report. Before I recognize David Ingram, who's the Sustainability Program Manager, I would just like to make a comment that in 2020, we charged the Clean Energy Task Force with developing a sustainable strategy to transition Wilmington to 100% renewable energy by 2050. Tonight, they'll present their aggressive, yet achievable, plans. Environmental stewardship has long been a priority for this council and others, and among other things, we adopted a resolution in 2009 in support of reducing greenhouse gases by 58%. And in 2017, we reaffirmed our commitment to reduce emissions and combat the effects of climate change. The task force is comprised of 35 members from different sectors who bring with them vast amounts of knowledge and experience. We're also deeply appreciative of their service over the last year. City staff also provided support to the task force, and I want to give special acknowledgement to Deputy City Manager Tom Moten and the City Sustainability Manager David Ingram, a position that we created in 2012 to help us reach our clean energy goals. Thank you for your leadership and support. We do have shared responsibility. We do have shared responsibility to protect and preserve this special place we call home, and that's exactly what we're doing with this plan. I also want to recognize and say thank you to Natalie English and Deron Sparks, who are the chair and co-chair of this committee, and the 35 citizens, again, that participated in this. And I can tell you, I participated and listened in on a couple of the meetings, and I just want to say, there was a tremendous group, hard-working group, came up with some really, really fantastic and good ideas, and I believe that it would set the course for the city in regards to sustainable energy for the years to come. And again, I just want to say thank you. David, floor is yours. Natalie? Natalie? Welcome, Natalie English.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the council, those here and not. I'll be really glad when we can all hang out in the same room again. I know you hear that every time, but I'm so tired of not being able to hang out with you guys. I'm honored to have had the opportunity to co-chair. You have a phenomenal staff, Tom, David, David Mays, the team from Fountain Works, they facilitated all of this work, and they corralled the 35 of us, who were all very passionate and very excited about the possibility for setting a pathway to become a clean energy city. The team came from all different parts of our community, with different backgrounds and experiences. It was a rich experience. We all learned a lot. I believe we do have a long list. As the mayor said, it's aggressive, it's ambitious, but I believe it's achievable as well, and thank you for asking us to be a part of that. Sorry if people couldn't see me. Thank you.
I can see your pretty face now. Thank you, Natalie. Appreciate it.
Mayor and council, thank you so much for asking us to be a part of that, of this task force. Let's remind you, it's 135 pages of a report. They sweated, the subcommittee sweated every detail. They worked real hard on this, and they are definitely expecting it to be executed. And the mayor stopped in, and Kevin stopped in at a few of our meetings. The people are very passionate. They want the things they recommended to be executed, but this is a council that has to review it and decide what parts can be done. It's doable. You mentioned one of the doable plan, these things can be achieved, and I think when you read a report, you see that it can be. Thank you for having, I don't have time here now to read everybody's name. It was 35 people that were asked to be a part of it. There's four folks from Fountain Works, and there's other staff that came in and out through this whole process, and the entire venture was done on Zoom. That's not what we signed up for. When this was presented to us, we said, okay, we have some nice meetings, no cheese crackers, enjoy each other's company. That did not happen. It was all work, all the time, from first screen on to screen off, and then actually sometimes post-meeting screen time, staff would stand back and deal with any issues that any subcommittee wanted to deal with. So we put a lot of hours in this one, and didn't get a chance to hang out with each other. When COVID is over, and we can see each other in person again, the mayor has promised us an outing with certain refreshments to help thank those good folks that work so hard. Thank you again.
Very well done. Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us and having us put this report together for you all. We're certainly very proud of this clean energy report. As already mentioned, a lot of effort, a lot of, a lot of passion, and a lot of knowledge went into putting this report together. We covered some of this already, but just to highlight, our purpose and our charter that we were presented with was to conduct research, look at best practices, and advise you on things going on both here in North Carolina and nationally in regard to clean Our charter was to adopt a clean energy policy for municipal operations with a goal for 2050. We also developed an interim goal for 2035 within the report, reducing the city's reliance on fossil fuels in both fleet operations and building operations, promoting clean energy and reducing harmful environment-related impacts, creating a socially equitable strategy, and that component of this task force was a lot of wonderful ideas and research and passion that went into working on goals that not only impact, well, that impact all of our city residents across the board, as well as providing strategies on how to educate our Wilmington residents on, on clean energy and best practices. As already mentioned, our task force that was pulled together was a diverse group of individuals representing businesses, utilities, local business owners, civic environmental groups, and residents from across this community. We felt it was a very diverse group and represented the feelings of the city of Wilmington very well. That 34-member task force was divided up into various different subcommittees. Our planning subcommittee kind of gave overall guidance to the group. Our Clean Energy Technology Subcommittee focused on technologies and opportunities that are viable here in North Carolina. Our transportation and fleet operations had an important job, as that represents a large portion of our greenhouse gas emissions. They were looking at clean energy fuel and fueling charging infrastructure best practices. Our Social Equity and Community-Wide Adoption Subcommittee really leaned hard into clean energy adoption and opportunities across all of our communities. And then finally, our Clean Energy Policy and Legislation looked at what are the current political climate for clean energy policy, both here in North Carolina, as well as across the southeast and across this country. We really did try to prepare some goals. We researched heavily, looking at a lot of other North Carolina and other southeastern communities, and those efforts are reflected in this report as well. Excuse me. Our, our vision, after pulling together this diverse group, was for the city of Wilmington to be a clean energy leader in North Carolina, and to accomplish that, we'd like to see investments made in infrastructure, adopting new policies and technology, which will enable us to provide resilient supply of clean energy in the face of climate change, creating a strong clean energy economy that provides equitable employment. I think the presentation that we had earlier was a perfect example of some of that clean energy economy that's possible here in the state. Engaging all citizens and partners in efforts to actively reduce the energy burden for our residents, so looking at weatherization programs and, and ways that we can finance energy efficiency opportunities on, on bills, as well as positively affecting the health and environmental and economic impacts of fossil fuel usage and greenhouse gas emissions. I think we touched on this already with some of your wonderful opening remarks, just this group really worked hard over the last year. It was facilitated by our wonderful partners Fountain Works. We held a total of eight full task force meetings. In between those meetings, these, the subcommittee members were meeting on their own very hard, sometimes one, sometimes two meetings in between our full task force meetings. There really was a tremendous amount of effort and engagement from all of these subcommittee members. I can't emphasize that enough. Our final meeting was held just December 17th, where we reviewed the final report and voted upon it to present to city council here tonight. The goals that we came up with, as I mentioned, we, we looked at comparable goals across North Carolina with some of the other cities here in our state that have already established goals, some more aggressive than this, some perhaps not quite as aggressive. We felt our goals were very achievable and based on technology that's either already here or that we see coming down the road in the near future. So in 2035, we would like to see a transition from fossil fuel-powered municipal operations to 50% clean energy and electrify 50% of our fleet. By 2050, we would like to see that transition from fossil fuel for municipal operations to 100% clean energy and electrify 100% of our fleet as that fleet technology exists at that time. Some of those things, we would love to have that looking glass to see that far in advance. We know that transportation sector is transitioning rapidly. We feel that by 2050, 100% transition from fossil fuel with our fleet is a possibility as well. As I mentioned, these goals were well thought through, and as you can see, they align with quite a number of the initiatives Wilmington has already either have resolutions for, or they align well with some of our, our state goals that the governor has set in place, as well as Duke Energy's recently announced net zero carbon emissions by 2050 goal. So our recommendations are divided into first steps, and I've got the steps lined out kind of by subcommittee. So we have our first steps that we feel are actions that we can take right away without major budget impacts and that are doable. So passing a resolution officially adopting these clean energy 2035 and 2050 goals is a step that all of the committees agreed upon and had in their recommendations. And then establishing an ongoing clean energy advisory committee, which is something that we recommend to help guide the city council and, and staff in regard to achieving some of these goals. Our Clean Energy Technology Subcommittee had a number of first steps as well, and they were divided into what we can do with our, some of our existing buildings, and what we can do with buildings that we're constructing currently or in the future. So municipal operations of buildings and facilities really focuses on optimizing energy efficiency within these buildings. There are a number of programs that we're currently utilizing, which we can continue to utilize in the future, including some of the Duke SmartSaver programs. They have a new virtual energy assessment program that we're, I think would be very beneficial, as well as they offer a no-cost design assistance program, which we've already utilized on our new police fire training facility, which worked out very well. Utilizing building management systems while we have some of those in place in some of our buildings, we'd really like to see that implemented across all of our buildings and, and using a common system that communicates with each other in a single platform, as well as just kind of promoting a culture of energy efficiency within our city staff to realize the, the small steps that they can take can have a big impact. For new construction, and this is one very much supported by the full task force, as well as our sustainability subcommittee, or within our, our staff group, is adopting a lead green building policy for all new construction or major renovations. That's looking at establishing a lead silver policy for any new buildings and facilities that we construct. Moving on to our Policy and Legislation Subcommittee first steps, we're looking at really encouraging new Hanover County, and this is, I think these recommendations are really kind of geared towards setting an example and collaborating with our, not only new Hanover County, but also some of our other groups within Wilmington to adopt clean energy goals. There's also a wonderful program called Soul Smart. It's a Department of Energy-funded program that provides no-cost technical assistance to really kind of help streamline solar installations. That's a program we'd really like to get involved with. And supporting implementation of energy efficiency legislation, both at the state, at local, state, and federal level. I can say some of these items I have bulleted here, there's already work going on. I think we would definitely like to stay heavily involved in, in pushing some of these efforts forward at the state level. C-PACE financing is a tool to pay for energy efficiency improvements on commercial buildings, and that's something, there's actually a North Carolina state working group currently working on that issue, looking at establishing something at the state level. A Green Bank is another one that's been tossed around in Sustainability Working Group, as well as, I mentioned, energy efficiency financing on, on, on bills. And Duke currently has their new IRP process in review, and we're very interested to see if they include something in regard to those kind of programs with their new IRP. Our Social Equity and Community-Wide Adoption Subcommittee, their first steps include supporting MBE participation in all aspects of clean energy planning and, and projects across the city, for any city projects that we have, as well as making them a bigger part of the clean energy economy. Promoting business development and incentives on businesses in the clean energy and technology sector. Again, I think the presentation that we had earlier was an excellent example of, of those kind of opportunities, and really kind of focusing on those clean energy jobs as opposed to the jobs that may be, or industries may be heavily polluting. Encouraging backyard composting and agriculture pilot program, that's another one to not only enhance our soil and agriculture in Wilmington, but also help us reduce our, our waste that goes to the landfill. Another first step is considering an additional sustainability staff position to handle some of the workload that this clean energy plan is, will put into effect. Our transportation and fleet operations, their first steps, including the use of fleet telematics, while we're currently using those in a number of our vehicles, we think we could, that could be a very low-cost, easy first step to use, use that data even more to guide some of our decision-making. Including the installation of EV charging infrastructure at all new construction projects across the city, to slowly build that charging infrastructure that's the transformation to an electric fleet is going to require. Implementing new vehicle purchase policies that must be designated that they, where possible, must be either hybrid or, or zero emission vehicles. Conducting a fleet resizing study to optimize our performance and greenhouse gas reduction. Again, I'd just like to emphasize that our fleet represents about 60% of our greenhouse gas emission, so that's an area that we would really like to target to help us get to that 58% greenhouse gas reduction goal. And just some other highlights is reducing our vehicle miles traveled. I think we've seen how successful some of our virtual meeting can be. Other opportunities are car pooling, telework opportunities, as well as just opportunities for promoting reduced car use and, and just mobility opportunities. Some of our future steps, so that was kind of a highlight. I certainly didn't go over all of our first steps, but I just kind of wanted to highlight from some of the subcommittees, and I'll do the same with some of these future steps here as well. You all have the full report with all of our, all of these steps. You all have the full report with all of our, all of these steps and recommendations in them. I was really just wanting to highlight a few of them this evening. So our Clean Energy Technology, again, focusing on collaborative opportunities, both with Duke Energy, as well as UNCW, Cape Fear Community College, New Hanover County, our ports, Medical Center, just reaching out to all of our other groups across the city to collaborate on clean energy opportunities. As well as participating in resilient electric grid infrastructure and energy storage planning. There's actually already a North Carolina Working Group and a pilot project we've been approached to participate in as using Wilmington as a example on planning resilient grid infrastructure. So that's an exciting opportunity that we'll be working on. Our Policy and Legislation Future Steps include evaluating the economic feasibility of participating in Duke Energy's Green Source Advantage Program. That's a program that allows the city to select, negotiate with renewable energy suppliers, putting out an RFP for providing us clean energy. I'm going to allow you to negotiate the size of the project, the pricing terms, contract length, and then they work with Duke Energy on building the facility, getting it integrated into the grid, and getting that clean energy into, into the system. The current program out of 600 megawatts, there's currently about 31.9 megawatts still available. Again, we anticipate this program, I think, to be renewed with Duke's new IRP process. So while there's only 31.9 currently left, keep in mind that our total usage is only about, would be covered by about 10 megawatts. So we could offset 100% of our energy with about a 10-megawatt system. Our Social Equity and Community Wide Adoption Subcommittee Future Steps include reducing the energy cost burden on low income residents. Again, that's utilizing things like weatherization programs, energy efficiency programs, community solar, really not leaving them behind as we transition towards clean energy. Growing our local clean energy workforce and targeting low income minority youth and people transitioning out of incarceration for some of those wonderful new job opportunities. Enhancing access to low and no carbon transportation and mobility options. Adopting heat mitigation measures to address the urban heat island effect. Again, I know we're, we've got a wonderful tree commission working on some of our heat island effect and getting more trees planted across the city. That ties directly into recommendations like this. And finally, supporting efforts to develop community solar and rooftop solar programs. Transportation and Fleet again. Again, installing telematics across all of our fleet vehicles will help us identify opportunities to reduce our fuel usage as well as route optimization, as well as enhance safety and smart driving habits. Creating a plan and budget to install EV charging stations in city owned locations across the city, not just at new construction sites. Taking advantage of grant opportunities to offset the costs of fleet conversion to ZEV. That's certainly one thing we're already trying to take advantage of with some of our VW settlement grant opportunities. We'll continue to do that in the future. Then establishing a schedule for converting our fleet from fossil fuels to zero emission vehicles. So we set up a possible 10% fleet of our fleet by 2035 or 2025, 50% by 2035, 75% by 2045, and 100% by 2050. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions either now or in the future if you all know where to reach me.
Do you have any questions for staff? That was a thorough presentation. I know you folks, David, did a lot of work with this plan. I know that we have a lot of reading to do to go over the plan, but I can tell you that I've been very pleased with what I have seen and the participation and the way that you folks went about really investigating and getting into the weeds and really getting into the meat of this thing to, and making it realistic. I think that was a concern and a goal that we all had was, you know, we wanted a plan, but we wanted a realistic plan that we knew that we could implement over at some time, which it is going to take some time to do it all, but we're, we're, at least we'll have a plan set in place in that way, kind of like we did with the Vision 2020 Plan Committee then can, can give us, give advisement to councils moving forward as to how to implement the planning or the new technologies that are on the horizon that we ought to take a look at or maybe alter the plan or change it to some degree. But I just want to say again, thank you for that tremendous work. And Natalie and Ron, thank you, and to all the participants that were part of this energy task force. You all have done a magnificent job, fantastic job, and a lot of different groups came together to work on this. So I just wanted to say again, on behalf of the entire city council, thank you very, very much.
Mayor, I have a question. Again, you know, echo what the mayor just said, it's a lot of work. Been on committees like that, probably none that digs down that deep, but was there, was there any parallel talks or discussions during the course of your meetings that pertain to cost? And I know it's not going to happen overnight, that it's a phased in kind of thing, but is there any cost associated with some of the plans that you're, that you all have talked about and shown here tonight?
We, with the timeframe that we had for the group and I think diversity of things we were looking at, we didn't have the time and perhaps all of the resources to dig into all of the cost measures. We did try to, as the mayor mentioned, we really did try to provide opportunities that we thought the current technology is out there or quickly approaching. Additional cost estimates for some of these will certainly need to be, establishing the ongoing commission is one of the recommendations, and that is what we were hoping would be able to dive into cost opportunities for all of these different initiatives. There, in regard to some of the, I'll bring up like the green building policy, there are a lot of studies and opportunities out there in regard to some of the positive benefits and improved long-term cost for implementing policies such as that. So we do have some, some of that kind of information.
Well, I don't think anybody would dispute the fact that everything that you've mentioned tonight certainly is for the betterment of the city and our health and, and long-term savings. I was just, you know, but on the get-go going in, there's certainly costs associated with it. I just, my question was just if you all had the time or if that was part of your, your mission, and it wasn't. So I appreciate your answer, and I'm sure we'll see that at some point. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You have questions?
Okay. David, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. It was great. I think all of council made really great selections to be on this task force, and you guys really put together a lot of great effort. And I'm really proud to have my name to be attached as one of the liaison, the mayor and I, with this clean energy task force. Thank you.
I'll just say on behalf of the entire task force, thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item of business is our Consent Agenda, Items 1 through 6. Are there any items that any council member would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of council?
Mr. Mayor, I move the Consent Agenda.
We have a motion by...
Second.
Barnett. Did Kevin make the second?
Charlie.
I did.
Councilmember Ravanbar is second that motion. Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravanbar, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Brady, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, that passes unanimously. The next item of business, which are ordinances, we have an ordinance, Item 01, ordinance admitting the official zoning map of the city of Wilmington, two-year zone property located at 210 Federal Avenue and 129 Dupree Drive from R15 Residential District, R7 Residential District. And I will announce that this is being heard on a second reading. It'll only take one vote. Just I'd like to recognize City Manager, Mr. Chilton.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As the mayor pointed out, this item has been approved on first reading at some previous meeting, up the second reading tonight. Don't have a presentation for you, but staff is here to respond to any questions.
Questions, further questions in council? If not, what are the wishes of council?
I move the, I move the item on second reading.
Councilmember Ravanbar is, the motion.
Aye.
We have a second by councilmember Anderson. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravanbar, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Brady, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that has been approved on first as well as second reading. Next item is Item 02, which is an ordinance making supplemental appropriation, counting correction in the amount of $7,035 to the public improvements CB fund to use for the installation of the FLIR camera and Churchill navigation system onto Sable utilizing capital balance investment interest funds. Just I'd like to recognize City Manager, Mr. Chilton.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, this is a request that you approve amendment to the ordinance that you passed at the last meeting that had incorrect account name on the funds appropriated from. This corrects that error, the dollar amount is the same, the purpose is the same, to outfit the camera system for Sable. The deputy chief is here, if you have any questions, we recommend that you consider approving this amendment, the correction of the county name.
Any questions for Chief Oren?
No, I'm going to go to...
Second.
We have a motion made by councilmember Anderson, second by councilmember O'Grady.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravanbar, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Brady, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, that's approved, first reading. Madam Clerk, can we take this on a second reading or do we have to delay the action? We can go ahead and do it? Okay, very good. We have a motion to waive second reading.
Remove.
Remove.
You have a motion.
Okay.
Councilmember Spears, second by Mayor Pro Tem Haines. Okay, how do you vote, Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Ravanbar?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Brady?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. It brings us to our next item of business, which are reports, Item RP1, since Council and Portraits Committee, Boards and Commissions, Mayor Pro Tem, Margaret Haines is the chairman of that committee, and this time I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Haines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I chair that committee, I'd like to recognize Mr. Robin Bark and Mr. O'Grady are also members of that committee, and we are always looking for people that feel they're qualified and have something to contribute, to please apply for any boards and commissions. And you can do that right on the website and fill out your application online and send it to the city clerk. With that, the following are the recommendations. Number one, the Convention Center Advisory Committee, the recommendation is to reappoint Kim Huffam for a term to expire December 7, 2023, to reappoint Natalie English for a term to expire 12/30/2023, and to appoint Holly Childs, who will be the WDI Wilmington Downtown Inc. representative, and that would be a term to expire December 7, 2022, and to also appoint Debbie Causey for a term to expire December 7, 2023, and that's an at-large position. Also, on the Convention Center Advisory Committee, the last recommendation there is to reappoint Zachary Brigham for a term to expire December 7, 2023. Next, we have the Municipal Services District Appointment, and we needed a resident, and we have Rosalyn Brooks for an appointment to expire on July 1, 2022. Next is the Downtown Parking Advisory Committee, and that's also to appoint Ms. Holly Childs as the Wilmington Downtown Inc. representative. Then we have Parks and Recreation, that advisory board, the recommendation is to reappoint Sharon Jenkins and to reappoint Emily Morgan, both terms to expire December 7, 2023. And lastly, we have the MPO Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and the recommendation there is to remove Jeremy Tid for non-attendance and to appoint Karen Mills. And there is not a term limit on that. And with that, I'll make the motion and ask for the council's support.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Haines, second by councilmember Ravanbar. Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravanbar, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Brady, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Barnett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
This concludes the regular agenda. Then the items will be brought to the city attorney.
No items.
City manager.
No, sir.
Madam Clerk. Okay. Mr. Grady?
Someday we'll be together again. I hope it'll be soon.
I think the mamas and papas, the mamas and papas made a song out of that.
Councilmember Barnett?
Julie, just want to congratulate the president-elect and president, vice president-elect, and we're praying that we will have a very smooth transition on tomorrow and throughout the rest of, rest of the term. Also, just want to share that The Journal, the oldest black newspaper in the country, is having a GoFundMe, a GoFundMe opportunity. So anybody interested in that, you can look it up on the web. And again, reminding people, please stay safe, stay, wear your mask, practice social distancing, and of course, wash your hands. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ravanbar?
No, sir.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes, sir. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and inconvenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. I too pray for a hopeful, hopeful and productive transition on tomorrow and welcome our new president and vice president, Biden Harris. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No, thank you.
Sterling, just real quick, I know that I've gotten a lot of calls from folks that are asking the question about the phones at the New Hanover County Health Department. I know we've had citizens call about that, the long wait. I know we've had citizens call about that, the, the long wait and time. And I was just wondering if we could get any kind of information from the New Hanover County Health in New Hanover County, just to see if there's any way that the, the phone, they can get some help on the phones there. I know there's a long wait, and I know there's a lot of people that are trying to get their vaccinations, but I think it would, it would, if we could just ask them if they have any plans to, you know, get more people to, to answer those phones or get some, you know, some better communications with a lot of the folks. I know they're putting a lot of things out there on the website, and they've got a number, but people are calling and having to call back many, many times, people having to wait for longer periods of time, and just wondering if we can get a, a better read from, from the county health department as to any kind of better service.
Be curious if they're not going to get some, some kind of appointment system online. I mean, I, I know that's, hopefully they have the infrastructure to do that. CVS.
They do, yeah, they do have an appointment system online, and what I'm understanding is that simply they're not getting enough of the vaccinations in the state, in the area. So by the time they get the number that they have, they've already had a number of people waiting to get it. So hopefully they'll get some more real soon.
Appreciate it. I just think it's important that, for us, as the city's elected leaders, to state that, that we condemn the kind of violence that occurred at the nation's capital on, on January the 6th. I believe that we were all kind of shocked to see what happened on that particular day. But the First Amendment enshrines that the right of every American to assemble, protest, make one's voice heard, but that right is only secure when we remain a nation of laws. Breaking the law and taking the law into one's own hands undermines our constitution, and violence rooted in race, or politics, or any other reason is incompatible or incompatible with our nation's values and ideals. Tomorrow is inauguration day, and like so many of them before, we will celebrate a peaceful transition of power from an outgoing president to, to one's party, to an incoming president of another. This is the hallmark of our nation's republic since its founding. Regardless of your opinion on the 2020 election, who won, who lost, our constitution can be a source of unity for all Americans. It represents our highest ideals and our ongoing quest to achieve them. We join our prayers and our hopes with those of our fellow Wilmingtonans and our fellow Americans, that tomorrow will once again be a shining testimony to our constitution, the rule of law, peaceful self-governance, and the great ideals of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. God bless you. Stay safe. This meeting is now adjourned.